This time I'll call the meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order for June the 11th, 2018. Board members, would you please rise for the board prayer led by Mr. Jimmy Rogers.
Let us pray.
I'm sorry.
Congress, Heavenly Father, again we thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you, Lord, for the accomplishments of these children of this county, of this school system. This is well represented here in the parents of this community, and the staff and members and teachers of this school system. Lord, we pray that you be with each and every one of those as we come to the conclusion of another school year. And, Lord, I pray that you be with this board, that these decisions that we make are for the betterment of education for the children of Haywood County schools, and better for the staff and teachers and administration, so that we can have one of the best educated school systems in this state, which we do, and we thank you for those many blessings that you've given our system. I want you to guide and direct us, and I pray that you guide and direct this board, and all the decisions that we make. Thank you for everything that you've given us again. We ask all these blessings in the Heavenly Name. Amen.
Amen. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, I'd like to announce it. The July board meeting is yet to be determined because of the holiday, July 9th. I was supposed to get back with Ms. King on that, and I haven't done it yet, but we'll probably move it further into the month of July because everybody will be off on the 4th, and that's when the agenda would be built, so give us another week or so to get the agenda built. We'll have, hopefully, a lot of personnel ready to go at that point in time, too. So, we will announce that in plenty of time so everybody that wants to be here can be here for the July board meeting. But it'll be held here at 7:00 in the Education Center. Again, we've got a lot of graduations coming up. Friday, June 15th at 7:00 is Tuscula's at the Western Carolina University Ramsey Center. I look forward to seeing everyone there. Pisgah High School Saturday, June 16th at 11:00 a.m. at the Western Carolina University Ramsey Center. And last but not least, Central Haywood High School will be held Saturday, June 16th at 3:00 p.m. at Haywood Community College. Are there any other announcements that need to be made? We'd like to mention that Mr. Barnett could not be here tonight due to a commitment with his work. Under agenda adjustments, I would like to announce that under number 15, we're going to delete that and come back and do that in July at the request of the director. And also, there was an extension on that anyway, so that's the reason, that's being delayed till July. I've been informed that there's several items that need to come before the board from building and grounds, so we'll do it at night. I'm going to call it 19A. And we'll have several items from building and grounds. And then I would like to add 19B. We have the opportunity to have one of our board members represent us on the North Carolina School Board Association Legislative Committee, and this board by official action can appoint someone to do that, and we have someone that's willing to serve. The third item would be 19C. Our appointment to represent us on the Mountain Projects Board, Mr. Kirk Patrick has informed the leadership that he is no longer be able to serve in that capacity. We appreciate your past service on that board, and thank you so much for being willing to serve, but we will be naming a new person to the Mountain Projects Board. Are there any other agenda adjustments that need to be taken care of at this time?
I have a couple for finance.
All right. Do you want to just do them at the regular finance time? And that would be in the actual, around 18 and 19, and 17, 18, and 19, we'll do those while you've got the floor, Mr. Hanson. Anything else that needs to be added to the agenda? Okay. Well, first, we have Mr. Jeff Haney has some special recognitions.
Chairman Francis, board members, Dr. Nolte, staff, and families and friends. It's a great honor of mine to recognize our retirees, what a dedicated group, what a group of employees. You know, I was thinking coming down, there's a couple of things in your life that really makes a difference. Getting married is one, having a child is one, and retiring is one. So, this is a big celebration. So, I've got a list of names, and we'll read the names. Those that are here, we're going to hand out a little gift from y'all. So, her first name is Frank Polyphron, Wendy Eball, Angela Howell, Cynthia Blankenship, James Conard, Julie Buchanan, Laurel Rogers, Melissa Gentry, Ann Garrett, Sherry Arrington, Wayne Freydy, Sherry Christopher, Elizabeth Thunderberg, Barbara Wilson, Kristen Kane, Paula Nichols, Cynthia Warren, Sam Warren, Ken Newton, Mary Lee Cease, Serena Goodwin, Lee Messer, Randy Barrett, Lee Williams, Sharon Gross, Lonnie Sutton, Deborah Jones, Charles Stiles, Doreen Stiles, Colleen Wilson, Kristen Bates. I think we ought to give these people a round of applause.[449.53][449.53](Applause)[450.53][450.53](Laughter)
Congratulations to all of our retirees. Thank you so much for your many years of service.
Thank you.
Yeah, they need to take a picture.[481.91][481.91](Applause) Should we have the retirees back up so we can get a picture? While you're coming up, I just want to let you know that I'm going to join you one day. I talked to my financial advisor the other day, and he said I had about another 30 years to go to be able to afford to retire, so I'll be there, just wait. Congratulations to all of our retirees. Thank you so much for your many years of service.
Thank you.[509.62][509.62](Applause)
Yeah, they need to take a picture.[513.12][513.12](Applause) Should we have the retirees back up so we can get a picture? While you're coming up, I just want to let you know that I'm going to join you one day. I talked to my financial advisor the other day, and he said I had about another 30 years to go to be able to afford to retire, so I'll be there, just wait.[530.01][530.01](Laughter) Thank you again, retirees. We appreciate your service. Thank you, Ken. Next on our agenda, we have Ms. Belinda Trantham.
Chairman Francis, board, Dr. Nolte, I'm recognizing the students from five schools who participated in the Regional Science Olympiad competition in March. North Carolina Science Olympiad's elementary events align with the North Carolina Standard Course of Study and what teachers are already doing in the classroom. These events are well-balanced between the various science disciplines requiring knowledge of science facts, concepts, processes, skills, and applications. Olympic-style medals are awarded to top-placing individuals in each event. Team trophies are also awarded to the top-placing teams at each tournament. Our Haywood County schools represent us very well in this competition. This is the third or fourth year that we've been doing this, and I had the great experience to get to participate in that with North Canton. And I would just like to give a big thank you to the parents, the students, and the staff and sponsors, because they put a lot of time into preparing for this competition. The kids practice week after week, and right before it gets time, they practice a lot that week before. They give up their Saturday for this competition. It's on a Saturday, and they put in a lot of time, and the kids work really hard on this. And it's great fun. If you ever have the opportunity to attend it, it's an awesome event, and they do very well. Our schools are basically, out of 13, we're most of the 13 schools. So, we've been trying to get it here because we do most of the representation, but it is in Buncombe County on a Saturday in March, and they work really hard. So, I would just like to give a big shout-out to all those for their hard work in this. Out of the 13 schools across the region who participated, our varsity teams, Junealuska took second place, North Canton third place, Bethel Elementary fourth, Meadowbrook sixth, and Hazelwood eleventh. And then we had some JV varsity teams. Bethel took second, North Canton third, and Junealuska took fourth. At this time, I'm going to ask the principals to come help with certificates, because I do not want to butcher names. And I've looked at some of them. So, we'll start with Bethel Elementary.
David Brooks is not present tonight. Paula Browning, Mayumi Kaminiti, Erin Clark, Jade Cody is not with us tonight, Alyssa Cole is absent tonight, Ace Creason, and Wade Crump, Hayden Fox, Eb Frizell, Destiny Garcia, Giancarlo Garcia, Caitlin Hollingsworth, Peyton Engel. I think we have a lot of kiddos in the bed tonight for the Science EOG tomorrow. Cooper Crook, Nathan McGrath, Patrick McGrath, Jacob Meese, Daniela Mendoza. Be patient, Peyton. We're coming. Addison Passmore, Rue Plemons, and Peyton Queen.[817.23][817.23](Applause) Dallas Reeves, Emerson Reinhardt, Ashlyn Robinson, Jackson Sharp, Maggie Shelton, Hannah Shepherd, and last but not least, Hampton Shipman. And we have a few others who were not able to be here tonight. Ava Sims, Mason Sims, Jaden Smith, Callie Watson, and Kylie Webb.[862.07][862.07](Applause) And our head coach, Caitlin Hughes.
You can come up here, parents, if you want to. Now, a lot of the parents should come up here and take a picture.[896.41][896.41](Laughter)
Okay, I have four that were able to, three that were able to join us tonight. So, I'll start calling the names, and I'll get to you, okay? Shaneley Haygood, Cooper Williamson, Dustin Moore, Colin Gutierrez, Abby Stebbins, Skylar Ball, Sophia Ouijiwicrama, Alicia Davis, Mark Rogers, Tyler McCall, Jara Noella, Daisy Salazar, Desi Maori, Levi Branch, Antonio Escheverry, and Emma Sutherland. Thank you.[985.01][985.01](Applause) And our head coach for Science Olympiad was Laura Kirchner. Thank you.[992.06][992.06](Applause)
Elementary.
Anyone from Junealuska?
Anyone from Junealuska?
We have three students that were able to make it this evening. Carly Ball.[1055.17][1055.17](Applause) Our head coach is not able to make it this evening. She is actually getting married Saturday, so hopefully she is home preparing for that along with Science EOG tomorrow.
And North Canton Elementary.[1101.08][1101.08](Applause) Thank you, guys. Awesome job. North Canton. And I just want to say, there was a little mix-up, and so some of the students here tonight may not have a certificate, but we will give them one first thing tomorrow.
Okay, we had lots of coaches, and I treated them to some things so that they would coach all these kids. We had lots. Four of them are here tonight. Angela Duckett, Debbie Klinghagen, Faith Newell, and Danielle Ramsey. And these are the students. Canyon Conard,[1157.08][1157.08](Applause) Kennedy Conard, Haley Connor, Aria Harden. Samantha Ivester was not able to be here. Eva Johnson, Liam Lang, Zachary Joffe.
Zachary Joffe.[1182.92][1182.92](Applause)
Candace Kemp.[1184.92][1184.92](Applause) Devon Shipman.
Daisy Carl.[1187.92][1187.92](Applause) Megan Terrell.
Selena Salasquez.
Ryan Bassett.
As you can see, lots of medals around their necks, so they participate in lots of events and do an excellent job with that. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have some athletic recognitions, and we'll recognize Mr. Mark Shepard first to do that for us.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm pleased to be here to bring our spring sports recognitions. Most of them, we've been able to get with and get here tonight. So, first of all, we're going to bring around Amanda Wells, the head girls' soccer coach from Waynesville Middle, to announce her team.
Good evening. This is our 2018 conference undefeated champions from Waynesville Middle.[1383.92][1383.92](Applause) Our sixth graders were Lee Reese, Maddie Ray.[1400.33][1400.33](Laughter) We'll give you the certificates in a second. How's that? Penelope McQuellen, Anna Rose Step, Jordan Braga, Reese Sun. And our seventh graders were Taylor Solley, McKenna Ezell, Kayden Mallett, Mallory Fowler, Eva Rinker, Hannah Empenyo. And did I miss somebody for my sixth grade? Missed somebody? Oh, Scarlett. Just saved her for last, because she's my special one. Cooper Richardson for eighth grade, Hannah Clark, Kylie Trout, Kylan Cockrell, Hannah Wells, Elena Herrera, Zoe Mina. And did I miss anybody? I said Kylie. And Kylie Cockrell. I'm very proud of these girls. I did what? I'm very proud of these girls. They worked really hard. They set good goals, and we had a very fun season. And I'm going to miss my eighth graders, but excited about next year. And where's Holly? Holly Evans, the assistant coach, and the mascots, Christopher and Julia Wells. Thank
Good job. All right, now we're moving on to high school. We have Pisgah High School's Assistant Athletic Director, Casey Crook, here for Pisgah's recognitions.
That's good. I've been called a lot worse, sir. Thank you all. Thank you, the board, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Nolte, for having us in tonight. We've got several awards, so I'll go through them first and foremost. Ms. Tammy Inslee loves to give a good speech. She's going to come talk about one of our cheerleaders.
Hello, I'm Tammy Inslee. I'm the varsity cheer coach at Pisgah. This is Addison Spavy. She was selected for the North Carolina Cheerleading Coaches Association All-State Cheer Team. She was one of 88 girls from across the state to try out. Addison will spend a week in Greensboro, and she'll cheer at the East and West basketball game and football games, and she'll perform at the North Carolina Cheerleading Coaches Association Clinic.[1765.11][1765.11](Applause)
Next up, I'd like to introduce our head baseball coach, Mr. Harold Shepard.
Mr. Harold Shepherd.
How is everybody doing? Not good, I hope. Thank you for having us. I'm here with Zach Scott. Zach Scott was named co-player of the year for our conference this year, the Mountain Six. Zach hit .360 for his career at Pisgah. He set a record, joined the ranks of some record holders. He's one of 12 in the state that hit two grand slams in the same game this year. And he spent four years with me on varsity. He has matured into a good leader, strong young man, and he has the opportunity to play ball this fall at Catawba Valley. So I'd like to recognize Zach right now.
One of y'all looks really good in that picture. My eight-year-old would always ask if Zach hit any dingers that night. Answer was usually yes. Thank y'all. Next, I'd like to introduce our women's soccer coach and give him a little shout-out before he announces his players. This is Joe Pinkston, who was voted by his fellow coaches as the Mountain Six Women's Soccer Coach of the Year. So please give it up for Joe.
Thank you for having us. We had a good season. And I have two players that I want to recognize. Alex Proben, who was voted All-Region. Congratulations, Alex. And Carly Stiles, who was also voted All-Region. And she was also voted as the co-Mountain Defensive Player of the Year. Thank you.
Back out here, Tim. Tim Shepherd almost snuck out of here. Let me get a picture. Thank you. Tim Shepherd almost snuck out of here. He's the nicer of the two Shepherd boys that we've got. He was the head coach of the JV Boys Baseball Team, who was conference champions this year.
We had a really good year this year. We went 11-1 in conference. Lost one that we probably could've. We proved that we could come back and beat them the other two times we played them. But it was a good group and a great opportunity for those kids. And I enjoyed coaching them, so thank you.
Next, we have our track team and Coach Jesse Wilkins to talk about some kiddos who did really well.
Good evening, Dr. Nolte and members of the board. Thank you for inviting us this evening. I'm going to take just a moment to talk about the individual accomplishments from our Pisgah High Track and Field Team this season. Several of them couldn't be here tonight. But I first want to recognize Cameron Walker. You may have heard his name in the media recently. He's getting lots of football offers. I had to drag him out for track, but he's glad that I did. He qualified for regionals and state in shot put. And we're looking forward to having him back next year. Also, our 4x200 team qualified for state, and they broke a school record that had been held for over 30 years. So we are very proud of them. And they had two freshmen and two juniors, so we're looking to get that time down even more for next year. That team included Tanner White, Kane Early, Levi Cagle, and Lee Ferguson. And then lastly, but certainly not least, is Carter Binkley. This is a great athlete, and he's also a terrific student. He's number one in his class for the class of 2019. So he does it in the classroom and out on the field. He's an extremely hard worker. And it was an honor to get to coach him this year. He qualified for state. He was second in regionals and finished ninth at state. And we'll have him back next year. Carter, congratulations.
Carter can run. I think last and certainly not least, Mr. Jacob Hanna. And I'll introduce him also. He was one of a pair of coaches of the year. He was voted by his fellow tennis coaches to be Tennis Coach of the Year in men's tennis. Mr. Jacob Hanna.
Good evening. I'm going to talk about two kids. Unfortunately, they're not here tonight. One's at football camp and the other one's working. But Will Norris and Tanner White, they were my two studs this year, I guess. It's the reason I'm probably standing in front of y'all right now. But actually, it is. They ended up going 12-2 this year in doubles play together, qualified for the state regionals. They came in second in the regionals. And very proud of them. Tanner has a 4.22 GPA. Will has a 4.39 GPA. Will's all-conference in basketball, tennis. Tanner's all-conference in basketball, football, tennis. And he was part of the 4x2 state championship team after practicing. I don't think he even practiced. So I think he went up there during practice, tennis practice, for like 30 minutes and got his handoffs. Pretty impressive athlete. So that's why I'm here. So they're not here, but thank y'all.
Jacob. Selena won it. Tanner qualified for state tennis on Thursday and then qualified for the state track meet on Friday, downstate both times. Very impressive. Coach Harold Shepherd is going to come back up and give you guys an update on one of our alumni from Pisgah High School.
Just wanted to bring it to your attention that Mason Fox, if you hadn't seen, who played at Pisgah for four years, went to Gardner-Webb. He just was drafted last week. He left yesterday to start with San Diego Padres. And he's probably got his contract and everything nailed down today. And he'll be playing a short season in Arizona. And so just wanted to mention that and tell him how proud we were of that and how big a deal that is. Because it's the first time since 1972 that Pisgah's had a kid that has gone on and been drafted and got to chase that dream. So just letting you guys know, and thank you.
Okay, last, only alphabetically. Tuscola Assistant AD Joey Robinson will come around to announce their superlatives in athletics.
Good evening. It's an exciting time up on the hill. We had a really good season moving into the new conference and a lot to look forward to next season and the years to come. The first group that we want to recognize tonight is going to be our golf team, Coach Aaron Smith.
Thanks for having us tonight, guys. Tuscola had, the golf team had a great year again. It's our fourth straight conference championship, third straight appearance to the regionals, third straight appearance at state championship. Had four all-conference players out of five starters and had 11th place finish as a state, or as a team at state championship. We'll recognize Isley McClure. He's here representing our golf team. He finished fifth at state championship as an individual.
Okay, next we have Coach Tatham for baseball.
Hello. Probably need to make an apologies to everybody. I was in the hospital last week, and I thought my boys were going to get notified. So I dropped the ball. So they're not here. But we had a good season this year. We ended up fourth in the conference, went to the playoffs. Should have a good look on next year's team because the first-place pitcher was from Reynolds. The next two spots, second and third, was pitchers from Tuscola High School. So we should be very strong next year, and I look forward to it. Again, I apologize because somewhere the ball was dropped and my boys probably were not notified of what was going on. So I'm sorry. Thank you. I will.
Okay, next we have Coach Melville. He assured me that he was going to talk a lot, so it's probably a long speech right here for girls soccer.
Good evening. We had a really good season. Finished fourth in the conference. Finished 12, 7, and 2. And of our six regular-season losses before the playoffs, five of them were to teams that were ranked in the top 10 in the state 3A rankings all year. So we had a really, really good season. We ended up with five all-conference selections. Have three of them here tonight. Kalina Georgiva, Jade Monday, and Lauren Singleton.
Okay, next. One of the teams on our campus that has really grown the past couple of years, I'm very excited about. Our softball program has really seen a lot of gains lately and in no small part due to these terrific seniors going to be recognized here in a minute. So Coach Brown is going to recognize them.
Hi there. We had a remarkable season this year. We went through to the third round of the state playoffs, only the second time in school's history. We beat the second seed team, Central Cabarrus, and then we lost to Cox Mill. We tied for second in conference against a tough North Buncombe team. We have eight seniors that we will be losing, and three have committed to play college ball. Tonight, I would just like to recognize our all-conference players. And we actually had one honor pitcher of the year, Jordan Kilson, and she could not be here tonight. Savannah Buchanan. Heather Carver. And Faith Robinson.
And for our last team tonight, I'm going to stand in for track. I helped coach hurdles. And so the young man we're recognizing tonight is a hurdler. He was all-conference in the 110 hurdles. He recorded the third fastest time in school history. He also, he scored in the top four in four events at conference. So he was a major reason why our boys' team finished so high this season. He also plays football. He was a regional qualifier also, again, in track. And just an outstanding, very humble young man, very hard worker, and we're going to miss him a lot next year. So this is for Blake Woody.
We have had some folks sign up that want to address the board. And now's the time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The Board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel. And first, I hope I can read these okay. We have Haley Ramses wanting to address the board. Ms. Haley?
I'm here today to thank you, Dr. Nolte, and the board for taking the Career and College Promise students who took college classes in high school and recognizing them. Students in this are very dedicated, and I just think that it's great that y'all recognized us with a green cord. We all have different stories in how we got into our paths. And just thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Melanie Lewis.
I'm speaking to you as a parent. I just want to say thank you for allowing the students here in Haywood County to participate in the Career and College Promise Program. From a parent's point of view, it has saved me $20,000-plus in college tuition. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Paige Reese.
I also would just like to say thank you for allowing students to participate in this program. And I have twins, as well as an older daughter, so I'll have three in college next year. And I feel like it's really helped save me a lot of financial burden. But I think they've grown a lot as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rachel Clark.
I also have a positive thing to say. Just give me just a minute to get my papers.
I want y'all to have a copy of the Mountaineer, and you can enjoy this kudos because it's such a wonderful thing.
Thank you.
The person that I'm talking about is on the right-hand side of the lawn. If you want to read about her, it's on the...
I'm going to try not to speak about any individual people, but thank you for letting me come and to speak to you. I just, again, want to give you a positive. So I know my boys went through Pisgah, and they did get to participate in the Career and College Promise Program. Saved me somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000, I figure, which is fantastic. And they've got some new programs now. I just wanted to make you aware. They've got some, some kids can take classes in nursing, welding, machining, computers, electrical, accounting, medical, and college transfer. All of these classes are free to Pisgah and Tuscola students if they meet the minimum test scores and qualifications. And those students are also able to participate in extracurricular activities. My boys, one of them went to the third round of the playoffs. I know that's a big deal. The young lady that is, that is shown right there in that Mountaineer article, she was, she made all-state cheerleading last year and is going to UNC Charlotte. So if you have any questions about it, there's lots of folks that can talk to you about it. But I just wanted to say thank you for saving Haywood County families so much money because it really means a lot. You're, you're doing a lot to turn over the poverty that sometimes exists in our 90% free and reduced lunch schools. So thank you. I appreciate y'all. Y'all work hard.
Thank you. Board members, you've had an opportunity to see and read the May 14 closed and regular session minutes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that'll be approved as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion from Mr. Francis. I hear a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Mr. Kyle Ledford. Talk to us a little bit about the Manpower Partnership Agreement.
Manpower Partnership Agreement. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's been understanding that you've been provided this on the moodle, but for the next few minutes, I'd like to talk to you about the specifics and answer any questions that you have. Manpower is a vendor. They act as a, I guess you could say, a payroll clerk for us, for the kids that we have in my building that do paid work experiences. For their efforts, we, we pay them a certain percentage. Our kids make $11 an hour in these paid work experience. For that, we'll pay Manpower $450 additional dollars, but for what we get from this, it's very much worth it. They do the, as I said, the payroll portion. They assume all the responsibility and the liability. They provide insurance for the kids, and we've done this for a long time. We did not do it last year, it went through somebody else, but we want it, we want it, we want it back with them. So if I could answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
You said it was $450 additional?
Yep. Their charge is $450 an hour.
Okay.
Added to the $11 that we pay the kids.
So what is the 45, 50 under?
That's, that's basically, we, that's, that's basically 45 and 1/2 percent, the, at the very most, that the markup would be on a, on an hourly wage. We were at 10, we just went to 11.
Any other questions? We need to make a motion to approve as presented.
Make a motion to approve it?
Ms. Barrett's made the motion. We approve the Manpower Partnership Agreement as presented. I hear a second.
Second.
So, Mr. Jimmy Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
One more question. Now, you said that they was give us payroll? Payroll, now why are we not using our own payroll department for stuff like that?
Well, Angie could speak to this better than me, but, you know, we're already short, way short up there, and these payroll checks come weekly, and we pay monthly, and the weekly is better for the kids because a lot of times they need it now. And typically, a kid's gonna work 20 hours a week for 10 weeks, so they're gonna make $2,100, something like that. That's after they've gone through a series of progressive steps for career development, which include all kinds of job shadowing, virtual job shadowing, career paper, so on and so forth. Sometimes this goes, they come back to me and say, "I wanna be a physical therapist," and sometimes they say, "I hate it," which, that's what we're after.
Just trying to correct me if I'm wrong. I think if they're on our payroll, they're our employees. So there's some liability there that we...
Which makes sense, that's why I was just wondering.
It's kinda like using a temporary service so you don't have the liability.
It is. Same thing.
Mr. Clark?
How many students do you have doing this?
Do we have doing this?
Yes, how many?
At any point in time, we'll probably have about 35 a year.
Okay.
And we'll spend somewhere in the neighborhood of $60,000.
Any other questions?
Does that money come from?
WIWA.
Okay. No, that's all I have. Thank you, Kyle.
Any others? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledford. Next on our agenda, we have some board members that are going to a summer leadership and policy conference. All we need to do is just approve it as a board for our policy. This time, we entertain a motion. We approve the folks that are going to the two conferences this summer.
So moved.
Dr. Rogers made the motion. I hear a second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Francis. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is, I think, our attorney to attend some training, and we need to do approval for that. This time, we entertain a motion. We approve the Summer Law Conference for Mr. Smathers.
So moved.
Mr. Rogers has made the motion. I hear a second.
Second.
So, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Elisa Glantz. Proud mom of a lot of athletes at your household.
Yes.
Been in the paper a lot.
Yes.
Good deal.
Her head is...
That's all right.
Big right now.
It's all right. It's all right.
Very proud of 'em. Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. Nolte, I'm coming tonight to ask approval for the local planning system for the CTE, for the 18, 19 school year. The local planning system is a vehicle for strategic planning, maintaining performance, and accountability for CTE. Part one is just an overview, and then the part two is actually to attain and maintain performance. Ms. King gave y'all a link to the actual plan. If you want me to print it out for you, I'll be happy to, but I figured if you wanna take a glimpse of it, it's over 100 pages.
Yeah.
So, didn't think anyone wanted to read that.
Okay.
But I'm asking for approval tonight on that.
This time, we entertain a motion. We approve the CTE plan as presented by Ms. Glantz.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion from Mr. Jimmy Rogers. I hear a second.
I'll second.
Second, Ronnie Clark. Mr. Clark? Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we skip down to item 16, the policies. Mr. Shepherd. I was looking over here, and I need to be looking over here.
Just trying to crawl back through there again. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, okay, so the first policy you have listed there for first read, 4370 student discipline hearing procedures, that one just has a tiny tweak in it related to the 4700, we just didn't have it ready to go for that big set, so it's only for first read.
This time, the 4370 will be tabled until the next regular board meeting, allowing public input. And for second reading?
So the second read policies are all there and ready to go, but in our policy committee meeting the other night, we wanted to highlight, and just make sure you guys were aware of a, of a paragraph here in 7100, just gonna bring it up on the screen here. You'll notice there in the highlighted section in, in part B there, in recruitment, it's basically talking about us not having to advertise for positions that we know that we're gonna fill internally through either lateral moves, reassignments, or even promotions. There was a little question about this, whether it would mean that these positions could be filled without board approval, but that's not the case. In fact, if you go on down to the, to the bottom section of that policy, it, it clearly states that, you know, still requires, yes, the superintendent recommendation and board approval for someone to be, be hired in the system. So we just wanted to bring that out. If anybody still has questions or further discussion about that, we can talk about it now, or we can, we can pull it and, and vote on it next time.
Is there any objection just to leaving it in the group?
I think it all, it just mainly had to do with whether you had to advertise that position. It still had to go through the, the same channels of...
It does, for approval.
...approval and everything else. You just didn't necessarily have to advertise if you knew somebody that you were gonna put in that position.
A lot of times, the, the principals or superintendents end up having to go through a very semantic process of, you know, recruiting and, and talking to people.
When they were gonna put a teacher in that position.
Yeah.
Okay. This time, we entertain a motion. We approve the second reading policies as presented.
So moved.
Dr. Rogers made the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Francis has seconded the motion. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
It's a lot of work. All right, we'll start off on Mr. Henson's journey of the finance committee.
For sure. I guess we'll start, since we're on 17, we'll start with the finance committee met earlier, and I make a motion to approve the regular monthly financial reports.
Okay, we have...
Everything look good.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Henson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
So, Mr. Clark? Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next up is a motion to approve the June budget amendments and revisions resolution. What this does is give our interim superintendent authority to keep things running through the...
Till we meet again.
Till we meet again.
Till we meet again. Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Henson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
So, Ms. Barrett? Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
It's just closing, since our new year starts on July 1, it's just allowing him...
It's really to help them continue on, and then the board doesn't have to meet again at June 30th to approve the short-term resolution.
That's correct. We still don't have final state budget.
So it would allow us to operate until we get those final figures, and then we'll bring all of that back to the board. We do this every year. It's a standing procedure that we have used for years.
Any other comments, questions before we vote? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next up is a motion to approve the 18, 19 interim budget resolution, which keeps things operating until the state budget comes out.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Henson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
So, Mr. Jimmy Rogers. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next up is a motion to approve the Child Nutrition Procurement Plan.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Henson.
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Clark? Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next up, we have a motion to approve the following bids for renewal through Child Nutrition. The beverage bid, which we went with two dealers there, Coke and Pepsi. Coca-Cola will be doing diet soda and juice. Pepsi will do water, tea, coffee, and low-calorie beverages. Have an ice cream bid, and the low bidder was Hershey. The milk bid is Dean Foods, which is PET. And then bid extensions for US food, we're in year two of a possible five-year term. And then the produce bid is year two of a possible five-year term.
Okay.
It's a motion to approve those bid renewals.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Henson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
So, Mr. Clark? Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
One more. A motion to approve Suri Insurance as a general liability in auto carrier with a $5 million umbrella policy with approval to seek a possible $10 million umbrella additional cost of no greater than $10,000.
Okay.
By switching, this is basically switching our insurance carrier, and presently, we're gonna save about $45,000.
That's a good savings. A little sharp.
Depending on, and if we go with the $10 million...
It'll be $35,000.
It could be $35,000.
That's a lot more coverage.
It's a whole lot more coverage than what we've got.
Yep. Okay. And that's in the form of a motion from Mr. Henson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Henson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Barrett? Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's all we have.
Okay. Now, we'll do building and grounds, and then the board will go back into closed session. We recess from there, but we'll go ahead and do the building and grounds, and then we'll move into closed session and come back out. With the personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Buildings and grounds has met earlier, and our first motion is not a fun one, but we have had some, we'd like to bring forth as a motion that we declare the Central Haywood High School Gymnasium fundamentally unsound, has found in architectural and interior engineering reports, and we would like to direct the superintendent to notify the community.
Okay.
Be in the form of a motion.
We have a motion from Mr. Rogers in the building and grounds. Do I hear a second?
Second.
So, with Dr. Rogers. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, our second motion that we would like to author, we brought it forth as a motion for the buildings and grounds, we'd like to authorize Joe Buchanan, our maintenance director, to start the process to get bids for the demolition of the Central Haywood High School Gymnasium.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Barrett? Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, then, Mr. Chairman, as our third motion on the buildings and grounds, we would like to also direct Mr. Joe Buchanan, as our maintenance director, to conduct a feasibility analysis to see where a facility could be placed at Central Haywood High School for the physical education, and working this in conjunction with our long-range planning.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Henson? Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
Chairman, I would like to mention that all this is, not with this motion, but the whole thing with Central Haywood High School, there has been an extensive study done with the engineering firm and architectural firms, and it is just a decision that we, we hate to have to make with our, with our, one of, one of our facilities, but it's, it's come to that point right now, but...
Does the flooding, you know, have anything to, I mean, affecting the building over time, and did that have...
Over time, it, it very possible. The, the land over there is, like I say, there's been soil testing done internally inside the building, outside the building, you see the structures that has been repaired, and since 1980, the building still moved some, and it just, it's, I'm, where we all know the flooding devastated quite a bit of our facilities, and that definitely...
Impacted.
Definitely did not help. It impacted that facility.
Flood levels were here and here.
Yeah. Like I say, we'll, Dr. Nolte, we'll, we'll be given more information at first. Any questions?
You know, Jimmy, you and I were on the board, and I think Mr. Kirkpatrick was on the board at the time. That was a tough decision back then, what to do with the building after Francis Sniven came through. And we made a tough decision and got away for a few years to use the facility, but now...
Most eighteen more years we were able to survive, so...
Yeah. It's unfortunate, it really is.
Yes.
But, reality has struck.
Yes, it has.
Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we've got two more. Buildings and grounds would like to bring forth as a motion that we approve a donation of a 12-by-16 storage building for the Big T Club with the loca, and it's bought and paid for by them, with the location being determined by the maintenance director, principal, and athletic director at Tuscaloosa's facilities.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
Second.
So, Ms. Barrett? Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, one more here, and the buildings and grounds has been busy.
They've been busy tonight.
Yeah, they've been busy.
That's good.
Our next motion would, we would like to approve a bid from Haynes Heating and Cooling for $223,000 for the Bethel Middle School Gymnasium Air Conditioning Project. This is a project that was approved in our capital-outlay budget previously, and now it has come to bid, and bids actually came in a little under what we expected, but...
Okay.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah. Is that a motion?
That was a motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rogers, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Francis, seconded the motion. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
Just kinda jumped in.
Discussion?
Explained at first, didn't I?
It's really good.
This bid coming in does save $157,000. About $150-some thousand dollars it's saving us.
Any other comments, questions? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We will continue again with you next month, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. This time, we're going to recess back into closed session. I'd call the meeting back to order. We had a few more items on the agenda we need to discuss, and item number 19B, as I said earlier, this board has an opportunity to appoint someone to be on the legislative committee down at the North Carolina School Board Association, and I asked Mr. Jimmy Rogers if he would be interested. He served on our policy committee, and he's been active on that committee once before, and I think Jimmy's agreed to do so, so all we need to do is make a motion, if someone would make a motion to nominate Mr. Jimmy Rogers.
I motion that Mr. Rogers serve on the legislative board again.
Okay. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What, nobody... No, I'm kidding. Come on, Jimmy. Come on, man. Also, I mentioned earlier that we needed to appoint someone, or ask really if someone would serve for, on the mountain projects board. Has Ms. Barrett agreed to do so?
I did.
Or do you think? Did you talk to Mr. Kirkpatrick about this, no? Okay.
No, but I'll get with him.
Okay. This time, I would entertain a motion to nominate Ann Barrett.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rogers made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Rogers. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we will do our personnel, and then we have one more item after personnel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and guests, we do have guests left. Under personnel for this evening, personnel for your information, we have 16 separation from employment, 15 employee status changes, four leave of absence. And then, under personnel for approval, we have seven employment, 61 status changes. There's a lot of personnel, I'm trying to make sure I don't miss one. Contracted services, two. Actually, I'm sorry, three. Contracted services, three.
All right.
Substitutes, three. Employee coach, 50. Non-employee coach, 18. Volunteer coaches, 13. And you may need separate motions for teacher contracts.
Okay. This time, I'll entertain a motion, we approve the personnel as presented thus far.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Henson's made the motion.
Second.
Second, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
As we discussed earlier, we have a large group of teacher contracts. This is a result of several years where teachers were in limbo after tenure was removed by the state. We have 260 teachers with one- or two-year contracts. We do need to pull number...
210.
Several pages here.
210.
Number 210, and vote on that one separately. So, I don't know if you wanna vote on the one we pulled first, or the...
Let's vote on those 260, or 259 now.
259 of the 260.
259. I'll entertain a motion, we approve the 259.
278.
Oh.
278.
278.
278. Is that right? Keep flipping.
Mr. Francis, you've saved me two months in a row. 278, and then we'll have the one we pulled.
All right. This time, we entertain a motion to approve the 278 teacher contracts as presented.
Okay.
Do I hear a second? Ms. Barrett made the motion, seconded by...
I'll second it.
By Mr. Francis. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And number 210.
Number 210, and I've been informed by one of our board members, Dr. Rogers, he's going to recuse himself from voting due to being a relative of his. So, we'll vote on, I need a motion to approve number 210.
I'll do it.
Mr. Clark has made the motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Henson. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with one recusal. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have your administrative contract? It was in there?
It's in the group list.
Okay, thank you. Very good. All right. The board is now going to discuss the process and where we wanna go from here on our superintendent's search. Mr. Smathers, will you kinda give us an update of kinda where we are and...
Mr. Chairman, I understand the candidates that the board wishes to interview, I think the decision we need to discuss here is more on the process is when you think you wanna do this, how important members are, and you wanna do the interview, whether you offer the candidates. We're not doing the interview on Skype or come here to the county. But I know we already have a contact. I need to watch your schedules and what to do here.
When is the conference that you guys are going to? Is it next week?
Next week.
Next week? So, next week won't be, it'd be after that.
And plus, you'd probably need to give the candidate some time.
Some time to prepare.
Prepare.
And then, the following week's...
Fourth of July.
It's probably, well, you got a week between...
We get a week between.
The 25th. You'd have to do it the week of 25th, or at least try if we can.
Mr. Smathers, it sounds like the board is talking about the week of June 25th, possibly doing that. And in the interest of time, if, you know, if, y'all wanna give them the option of being in person or on Skype, isn't it?
I think, I personally feel, I would like them to choose whether, you know, they may wanna be here in person, or if they, you know, wanna do the Skype, that's...
Can we handle that, Mr. Trantham, in the electronic?
We'll make work.
Well, give them an opportunity, we can always, if we want to see them in person, we can do that later if we need to. And I think, give them, Mr. Smathers, give them an opportunity to choose between the two, whether they wanna be here in person.
Do it here, show it here in this room?
That'll be fine.
Time for it, pre-time, night, daytime, three nights?
Have to be an afternoon or a...
Some of us has to work.
But we can.
We can start it.
Start it.
If you want to. Wanna do, start at 5:00, 4:30, or 5 o'clock or something like that, could you do that? Stephen? 4 o'clock. 4. How much time do you think, our candidate? Well, it could, it could be a moving target, about an hour or so.
Hour, hour and a half.
Hour and a half. Might have to do it over two nights.
Well, I mean, if we, if we don't have a date, you're saying between the 25th and[1587.63]